Hold on for the bird, John.
What's that? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's pretty close to being in sync with the time on my computer. At least I think it is.
You have been summoned to have a call the meeting to order. Welcome to the June 2021 meeting of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen. As a preliminary preliminary matter, this is John Samia Chair. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. John LeBeau?
Present.
Morris DiPaolo?
President.
Beth Cassavan?
Present.
Teresa Flynn?
Present.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizikar?
Present.
Taylor Galucia?
Present.
Welcome, Taylor.
Thank you.
Good evening. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Meet as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please be sure to press star six to mute your device. Meeting will not feature public comment. Running each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll called vote. First item on the agenda is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, a roll call vote is required. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mr. Samia, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda relates to the minutes of May 25, 21. All have had a chance to review these minutes. Are there any questions or comments from the board? There being none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from May 25.
So moved.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, a roll call vote is required. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mr. Samia, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, announcements or reports? Board members, any announcements or reports?
Uh, Mr. DiPaolo?
Yes, please.
More of a report or a request, but had some complaints about the speed on Maple app, particularly in the area of the of the crosswalks in the May up in front of Town Hall and going towards the post office. And also at Gil Ave. And speed limit is 40 miles an hour there. Which I know is posted and it's based on speeds, but given that we have so many there's so many crosswalks in such a small area. I'd like I'd like to request that, and I know I know it's a state road and they have jurisdiction, that we at least ask start with probably the Highway Department or Engineering in the Police Department and get their input. Ultimately, it would be a if 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 they thought it was worth investigating, it would have to be mass thought, but I'd just like to see what they have to say about it, if anything could be done. That's okay with the rest of the board?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. DiPaolo. Next item on the agenda is the Town Managers' Report. Mr. Mizikar?
Good evening, Board members. So this evening, just a couple of updates for you briefly as Mr. Samia. Welcome to tonight's Taylor Galucia's first meeting. Pleased to have Taylor on board, serving in the role as Administrative Assistant, Principal Department Assistant to the Board of Selectmen in the Town Manager's Office. Taylor comes to us with good experience and recently graduated with a Master's of Public Administration degree from Merrimack. So welcome, Taylor. We're super proud and happy to have you on board. And then just also Board members will have to acknowledge some point in the future Valerie Clemmie and her service and she transitioned over to the Town Clerk's role, and I know you know that that's on your radars. Finally, late this afternoon, I received word from Congressman McGovern's office that $8 million has been included in the House Transportation Bill for Route 20, which is good news. It's a good starting point. If it wasn't in this House bill, then it wouldn't be considered. Certainly a long way to go in the process and get it included in the Senate and also then making it through Conference Committee and all those things at the federal government level. So very pleased to report that late breaking news from this afternoon and will continue to work through the board for advocacy from Congressman McGovern's office. So that's the end of my regular report. Happy to answer any questions or go into the COVID report.
Any questions? Please proceed.
Thank you. So update from your last meeting on May 25. Look at nine additional positive cases in town, so still very low numbers, much like last summer, which very pleased to be in this situation after trying winter. We also improved our overall state color status from green to gray, which is the lowest reporting factor. We are now at 1.6 incidents per 100,000 daily, which is a significant decrease over where we were from last meeting, and then our positivity is now down even further, less than one half of 1%. We continue to report out our weekly cases in vaccination data every Friday afternoon. Unfortunately, there was an additional COVID indicated death reported by the Town Clerk's Office for this meeting since your last one, and that count now stands at 68. We've also resumed full and open operations in all town buildings. The library is further removing any restrictions that they have actually putting some limited opportunities for interested individuals to go and use their computers within the coming weeks. We saw face coverings. We're asking for everyone to continue to wear face coverings when in within Town Hall. All staff are wearing those when they're not at their desk. Will revisit this a week from today at the expiration of the state of emergency. Council on Aging is open for outdoor activities and limited indoor activities. And I previously touched on the library. As the boards well aware and will likely take action later this evening, the state of emergency is set to expire on June 15 at midnight. With regards to vaccination data, we're continuing to see increases, but like much of the rest of the Commonwealth, it has slowed down quite a bit over this two-week reporting period. We do know that about 67% of those eligible have received at least one dose and 56% are fully vaccinated. I'll just quickly move through this. Only eight cases so far in June. May ended up being very similar to the start of last summer. So that's very promising for what lies ahead. And our trend is obviously considered continues very low. Most days now we're reporting zero cases and hope to continue to be able to do so. And then here's the raw data with regards to positive cases by age and excuse me, vaccinations by age. So happy to answer any questions if the board has any.
Any questions? I'm not seeing any. Going to proceed to the next item, Mr. Mizikar? Under Financial Business?
Yep. I'm going to reshare my screen, which I shouldn't have stopped.
Next item is an American Rescue Plan update. Thank you.
All right, Board members, I want to take the opportunity to provide the latest information that we have with regards to the American Rescue Plan, ARPA as it's being called, and this is the Federal Recovery Funds that was passed in on March 11 of this year, providing substantial resources to aid in the economic and public health recovery following the pandemic. So it's my goal this evening to update you with where we stand on both our understanding of the funding that we're going to receive and make some recommendations on the various areas where we may be eligible to spend the funding within. I know we keep saying this at the meetings, but it still remains true today despite this being passed in March and talked about for 30 or 60 days before that. There's a lot of information to digest and see how it really fits into our particular scenario in regards to what we do as a local government here in Massachusetts and as the town of Shrewsbury, and there's just a lot of different layers. This is obviously federal legislation that's very broad. It aims to enable and improve situations in over 10,000 different municipalities throughout the country. So the interpretation from the federal level to the local level is quite trying, and we always want to get it right because all federal funding, including these funds, will be pulled back by the federal government after they're spent if they were not spent in accordance with the guidelines that's issued. Those guidelines happen to be in the form of an interim rule that is published within the Federal Register and if it's 144 pages long, provides a lot of examples, supplemental information, calculations, and things like that. So we're still going through it and digesting it and building the best program that we can to help Shrewsbury respond within the parameters of this program. So an update, a good update on the total figures, it's up slightly from what we previously reported, which was about 11.2 million. This is our final allocation that we've received from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. They actually have these funds on hand for us. And so it's 11,515,685. The vast majority of that comes in because Worcester County is not a functioning governmental entity. If they would have been, they would have received those funds, and we received just a little over $4 million in direct aid to the town, but we have the opportunity to expand all 11.5 million that's been allocated to us. So those funds are eligible for costs that are incurred from March 11 when the bill was passed until December 31 of 2024. So between now and 2024, we have the ability to encumber and set aside these funds for particular uses. And then an additional two years to actually spend all the funding, close out all the contracts, do all necessary reporting that we're going to have to do to the federal government, which will be done on an annual basis in our case. This is very different from the CARES Act. There's very limited interactions with the state government. The state does not have the opportunity to provide additional rules beyond what the feds have applied. So the State Department of Revenue is certainly continues to be an ally and provides us with limited guidance, but they're not a regulatory authority when it comes to these funds. Those funds are on hand at the state. We will be pulling down on our first 50%, which is a little over five and three-quarter million dollars. We'll be making that application later this month or early in the month of July, and then 12 months from the date that we receive it, we'll be able to apply and pull down these funding. I'll try to note as much as I can throughout the course of my presentation without sounding like a broken record, but this is a unique aspect of this federal program that we haven't received in the past. Never before did we have the opportunity to draw down on funds and determine how we're going to use them later. There's no application process. We simply request our funds and they're transferred to our bank account. So there is are several categories, four main categories, and then subcategories within each one of the the four main categories where the federal government has set forth information in the interim rule on how we're able to spend these funds. Obviously, first and foremost, it's responding to the direct impacts of COVID-19, including public health mitigation efforts, medical expenses, behavioral health, public safety, and public health staffing. Some of those examples you'll see in my sub-bullet there would be things that we've talked about so many times over the last 15 months, contact tracing, testing, vaccinations, improving public health systems, communicating about the disease, and adapting our public facilities because of the challenges of COVID-19. Beyond that, most of the rest of this program is new. It's very broad. It's very interesting. It's certainly the most flexible the federal government has ever been in providing funds to municipalities, but it's far from free of strings. There's a lot of different ways to approach this to pace depending on your individual circumstances in the community that you find yourself in. And one of those unique aspects is within the second category, which is responding to the negative economic impacts. So this section provides broad latitude to municipal governments to mitigate economic harm to workers, households, small businesses, affected industries, and ourselves within the public sector. Now, this is a very broad use of funding, but it's mainly tailored to communities that find themselves within what's called qualified census tracts with throughout the country. And a qualified census tract normally has similar characteristics of very low income, disinvestment, eligible for community development, block grant, and direct federal support through other federal programs. Shrewsbury does not have any qualified census tracts within our boundary. There's only a few of them within the central Massachusetts outside of the city of Worcester. So we're still able to spend funding within this category, but we have to meet much more significant and stringent review and documentation factors if we decide to spend funds within this category. The second main bucket is premium pay. And it's exactly what it sounds like. We'd be able to provide additional pay to workers who are on the front line, both public and private sector entities who are responsible for frontline response to the public health emergency. And, you know, there's a wide variety of sources of individuals that this would apply to. It's beyond just the scope of local government workers. And so this presents another new challenge for us. So yes, you can look at this and say, wow, that's really broad and it's really helpful, but we're not really geared up to manage a program like this. It's something that we've never done as a municipality. You know, we're not the city of Boston. We're not the city of Worcester. So this will take a whole different approach, you know, if we look at this area. Whenever we're considering our own staff members and the other staff that are eligible for it, there's a test that we have to apply that says if a worker's current wages are more than 150% of the average county per capita income, then significant amount of justification needs to be provided and documented demonstrating why it's still important to provide premium pay to these workers. So a lot of these programs, as you'll see, are really geared to lower-income individuals who are in in groups who are disproportionately impacted by the the pandemic, either because of their workplace setting or their housing arrangements and things like that that you've all likely heard on the national and other news sources. The third category is revenue loss. This is something this board has talked about quite often. It's one of truly the the broadest areas. If we can identify revenue loss related to the pandemic, this is the broadest category that we could spend the funding on because it can be used any, you know, pretty much for anything that's within the parameters of the American Rescue Plan, but then also whatever it is that we do on a day-to-day basis. So that's the good news. The challenging news is that the federal government, again, applying rules across all different types of local governments, which you all know very, very widely what your main source of revenue is. Is it a sales tax? Is it a property tax like we have? So they said whenever you're considering a revenue loss for this program, you have to take all your general recurring revenues, sum those up, and then for fiscal year 19, compare them to what you've actually received in fiscal year 20, and then determine if you actually have a revenue loss. The real revenue loss just isn't the difference between those two numbers. It's either the application of a general growth factor set by the federal government of 4.1% per year or your actual growth for the three years prior to the pandemic, so fiscal year 17, 18, and 19. So our revenue sources that would fall into general recurring revenue are broad and variable, right? Obviously, our largest source property tax revenue is included, but includes very small sources of funds, like the fees that we receive for our recreation programs, the fees that we receive for planning board fees, licenses and permits, all of our local receipts, cemetery fees, fees that come in for revolving accounts and things like that. We have questions. You know, do we apply this fee? Is this fee or revenue source included? Is it not? Unfortunately, we have to go to the federal government to get those questions answered. It's not as simple as making contact with the folks that we're familiar with in in Boston, but, you know, I know that we can work with the Congressman and our Senator's office to get those questions answered, but it's just a different process for us. So it's a very promising area that we will explore, but getting to that actual calculation and feeling comfortable and coming back to the board and saying this is the number that we can that that we're preparing for the current fiscal year is something that we're just not even close to being able to do yet. And it's not a one-time snapshot either. As you can see on the screen, we have to look at particular time periods and adjust our calculation based on the number of months that have elapsed since the start of pandemic. So we have to look at the end of calendar year 21, calendar year 22, and calendar year 23 to determine if we're able to use any of those funds. So you can start to see that we're going to have to prioritize some funds. We're actually going to have to set some funds aside at the beginning, especially if there's a revenue loss that may be applicable, because we don't want to spend money in a very narrow category if we could broadly apply it. The the final eligible use area are infrastructure projects. They're broken out into two different sections. First are water and sewer projects. This is a very promising area that this board has also discussed in the past. I think this is the area that I have the most comfort in as we talk about tonight. Very clear guidance that says if you're allowed to request state revolving funds for a particular water or sewer project, then you're allowed to apply these funds towards that. This will be a significant help to both our infrastructure and taking on additional projects and avoiding rate increases to handle projects that are already on our books. We have more than 11.5 million dollars of infrastructure projects that we want to tackle, so we'll have to be very strategic about how much funding that we dedicate for these infrastructure projects. It's something that we see in the news every day now, cybersecurity attacks, and we will be working very diligently in using these funds and make sure we harden our infra technological infrastructure related to our water and sewer systems. The final area is broadband projects. I just put this on there to make sure we are thorough. Unfortunately, our current speeds exceed the base speed. Selco's currency speeds exceed the base speed and meet the minimum thresholds already. So unfortunately, we will not have the opportunity to use these funds to help improve broadband because the federal government has deemed that we've already achieved significant progress in this area. So moving beyond those main areas, I know there are a lot of information at you. There's still certainly a lot of information to learn, a lot of supplemental materials that we have to go through. I just wanted to talk a little bit about how we may want to think about these. I've already mentioned that I look forward to working with the Board of Selectmen. I think we're going to both have to set aside funds for future calculations and make better informed decisions in both the near term and long term as we understand this program better. And then also prioritize funds perhaps within these various buckets that I've laid out this evening. I think if we start to prioritize them, we'll be able to dive deeper into these individual categories, look at the questions, look at the tests that we have to meet in order to make sure we're spending these funds appropriately. And that will be very helpful. And then after my recommendation, after the board sets these high-level priority areas, demonstrate that to all department heads and interested groups and allow them to do an internal submission to the Town Manager's Office requesting their innovative project ideas, rank and prioritize the best ones of those that come in based upon the needs that we have as a town, and then bring a funding plan back to the board for your consideration and approval. So that's my presentation on this. I'm going to stop sharing my screen and then look forward to any discussion with the board.
Thank you for your presentation. Questions, Mrs. Flynn?
Thank you, Chairman. Kevin, just two quick questions. I'm not sure if I missed. With regard to the funding distribution, are we required to only take 50% now? Is that what is, okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, so that's that's our maximum amount that we'll be eligible for, and then 12 months later, we can get the rest.
And are there any requirements around getting a certain number or type of eligible uses? So for example, could we use 100% for one particular use, like water and sewer hypothetically, or any requirements to spread it?
Nope, there's no there's no internal requirements between the eligible uses. You could focus on one, literally spend it all on infrastructure if that's what we decided to do, or spread it equally. No other further restrictions.
Any other questions? Mrs. Cassavan?
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar, we had spoken at length during the lead-up to the override question about ways that we would be able to use rescue plan dollars to supplant override dollars. And I know that there is a lot, there are a lot of restrictions on this money, but I'm just wondering if you have any sort of idea if there's still going to be some way to do that.
Yes, I do, but it all lies within that revenue loss calculation. Whenever I go through those, the other areas of the projects, since utilities are excluded from the broadest use of the funds, like the revenue replacement, and they don't fall within the tax rate also, that revenue loss calculation is really the sole opportunity to forego additional tax increases or kind of balance out what we've requested through the override. So that still does exist. I don't know a number right now. I'm hopeful. Actually, late this afternoon, Town Account Mary Thompson sent over this, I don't know, it's got to be a 300-line tool that the Government Finance Officers Association has prepared for municipalities to enter their various types of revenue sources and then run those calculations. So hopefully, they've just flattened the curve for us and being able to get to a number, and we'll have it sooner rather than later. But yes, the short answer is yes, and we should be able to offset those costs for taxpayers, but how much, we're just not sure yet. I I guess I should say that I do have a little bit of concern just because of of how our debt service scenarios have played out over the course of those important years that we have to look at. For instance, in fiscal year 21, you know, it's the first full year the bill is on, so that would have increased our revenue year over year. Not in any way, you know, to blame us, but it's just bad timing. Whenever you now go back and look at at some federal calculation that was was set that we're going to have to follow. So it may be a little bit challenging because we have additional revenues for debt service, but it's to be to be determined at this point.
Can I just ask a follow-up, Mr. Chairman? So, you know, You know, in that debt service that you were just explaining, so are you saying that the money that we borrowed in order to finance building projects is counted as revenue for us?
That's my understanding at this time, yes. You know, we're going to have to count that as general recurring revenue.
Mr. DePaulo?
Now you're still muted. Sometimes that's my best speaking. So just a few questions. So on, there's no, are we able to look back into fiscal twenty-one to recoup expenses? Or is this only? No, yes?
So, so for direct expenses, no, we're not allowed to go beyond March eleventh. I will say, as a side note, we're still expending CARES Act funds for those disproportionate effects, but we're wrapping that program up as we're running out of those funds and the program ends in September this year. So we still have that opportunity to use for direct twenty-one costs, but this does not have a look-back period.
Okay, this, we're going to get half of this money upfront, so roughly five and a half million, whatever. Is that going into, or does it have to go into a special account, or does it drop to the general fund?
No, it will be managed separately outside of the general fund. It does not require further appropriation from town meeting or anything like that, so it'll be managed separately and subject to audit by the federal government, included in our regular annual single audit by our standing auditors as well.
So so that it's almost treated like a grant. It's off-budget, right?
That's correct. Yeah, the funding limitations only exist through the end of the grant performance period, which is really twenty-twenty-four.
So does who determines whether or not the money's going to get spent then in this scenario? Is it, is it the town manager?
Well, I mean, I think the best approach that we could take is, you know, what I tried to lay out there is getting priorities from the board, taking those priorities and having all input from our senior management team on recommended projects, and then coming back to the board throughout the course of time, however much we intend to release at a certain amount of time. I would say more than likely, as the elected executive, the board of selectmen makes those final decisions, but we can manage it however tightly or within whatever parameters the board wants to set.
So so the, okay, I mean, it's something you can, we can look at later, but it almost seems like the manager, the way the chart is written, would have, have the ability to do it. I'm not saying that's good or bad. I was just wondering who had it? Who had the legal responsibility or authority? And just one last question. When you're talking about, like, the impact of the revenue we received by bonding the school, and the analysis with the revenue, is it, is it revenue compared to expenses or just revenue? Because, oh, that's an interesting way to look at it.
Exactly, yeah. And you know, the, the, one of the other parts that I kind of struggle with is we're not allowed to use these funds to pay off debt. But, you know, but, you know, with respect to those in Washington, as I said before, they're applying rules to eleven thousand municipalities in the country, and, you know, Massachusetts has a unique system for raising funds for debt, you know, and you know, so everyone has their own nuances, but, you know, this is something that's going to challenge our revenue loss analysis.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just one follow-up and then I'll be done. So, so if we're talking about doing work on the sewer of water, this has to be pay-as-you-go? Does, we, we can't borrow?
That is correct.
Okay. So you can't leverage it?
No, you cannot leverage it through debt.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Anyone else? I have a few questions. No one does. So just following up to one question that Mr. DePaulo asked. In terms of what type of investments, we're going to have half of that money. Is there a limitation in type of investments? Is it U.S. Treasuries? And do we get the benefit of the interest if that's the case?
Yeah, we do get the benefit of the interest, and we'll probably ladder this out into some CDs once we set the priorities. We are allowed to take advantage of the interest that would be retained within this particular grant account, I believe. The other scenario, only other scenario would be, would benefit local receipts. I'm just not sure if there's information on that, but we will get the benefit of it out of the way.
Okay, and, okay. Will these dollars benefit us at all going forward, as long as we have for bond rating purposes?
They'd be considered an overall balance sheet asset. I would think so, but they probably have a heavily footnote or asterisk, you know, to try to segment that out and not let it cloud our bottom line.
Okay.
Which is good and bad, right? It would be good to have it in our bottom line now, but bad if we looked out at five years from now, we look like we had a a loss of total assets.
Yeah, from a disclosure standpoint, it would be heavily disclosed that it's subject to clawback, for lack of a better term, depending if we don't utilize it. From an audit period standpoint, how long is the clawback, right? Is it years in advance, do we know? So is it something the feds could come back five years later and audit our books and we, a risk? Or do we have any clarity on the time?
I don't know the clarity on the time. It's something that we'd have to dig into. I don't know if there's a general rule on it. I did not see a particular rule within the document when I read it, though.
Okay, and then?
It is something that is concerning, right? Because we're, you know, we're kind of out here on our own to do our best to interpret their guidance, and then, you know, they make the ultimate decision in the end.
In, thank you. Speaking of rules, are they final? I know you have a hundred and forty-four pages of easy reading, but do they promulgate more rules? And is that in the prior funding, is it sort of, is it still happening? Or is it first few months afterwards?
So there's, so this is an interim rule still. It has not met its time duration. I don't know if that's a sixty-day time duration or a thirty-day time duration. We are, I say we very broadly, advocating through the National League of Cities for further guidance to be entered within the interim rule and just provide clarity to municipalities. So hopefully, we get better information later this summer.
Okay, thank you. And then one final question, switching gears from the regulations to use on the eligible use under public health for responding to negative economic impacts. Are those largely means-tested? I couldn't tell. I mean, I know from, or is that not clear yet? Because on the one hand, reading the language, it seems that there's some broad opportunity, and then it seems also, though, that when we look at the revenue, for example, or that there are limitations, or it seems to be broadband, for example, as well in terms of underserved. So is it also tied to means-tested, or is it as broad as it?
So there's a primary means test. If you're in a qualified census tract, then you are free to use it, like, to the letter of the word that you have. Since we don't have a qualified census tract, so you, like, the presumption of use, if that's a term, switches. If you have a qualified census tract, you're presumed to be working within the parameters and spirit of the program, so spend it as well to recuperate from the negative impacts. If not, since we're not, we have to answer various challenging questions on how, why, what, how do you intend this to enable the recovery from the pandemic and then further report on the results? So if we, if we say, for instance, we're going to support a particular industry, and we're going to judge that by the number of employees that they hire over a period of time, if that doesn't happen, then we'd be subject to not meeting, you know, what our own rules are that we set up, and we'd have to report that to the federal government. Now, does that mean that they pull the money back? I don't know, but that's the process that we have to use. It's much more rigorous. The burden of proof shifts to us under this scenario.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for answering all those questions. Mr. Laboe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, a lot of information and a lot of processes that we've never seen before, and good luck with that, Mr. Carr. As I start to try to understand this, I think I'm going to need some time to get into it. It seems to me that the area where, and I'm asking, that the area in which you may have the most flexibility is the revenue loss category. Am I correct, or am I off-base there?
So you're correct in that if we can determine we have a revenue loss, then it's somewhat unlimited on how we can spend it. It's, it's not within just the eligible uses of the program. It's pretty much anything as a municipal government that we're allowed to spend funds on.
So that would be one that we likely should explore very, very deeply, particularly, we can't do the broadband. That's, it's off the table. I'm delighted that there's something for water and sewer, but of course, this is another case when we a little bit get fish for good behavior that we've done such on our own. So I mean, I'd be very interested, and I know, as you, this is just the beginning of the process, to really understand that category, to see how we can, you know, when I say exploit it, that might not be the best word, how we can take it into the program as it's presented to us, and apply some discretion to how we might spend it. I know I've spoken already, Mr. Mizikar, about what I had about potential use of the funds. I'm sure other board members may come up with some other ideas as well. But to me, that's the most undefined and interesting facet that I see before us right now. So thank you. I needed that clarifying point and look forward to further further guidance, explanation, and information. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, great. Thank you for the presentation, understanding some of the facts are evolving. And there's a lot of information there to digest, but appreciate the full report and look forward to, as information develops, working through this to see what opportunities arise. So if that's it, we'll go to the next item under new business. It is the fiscal twenty-twenty-one Town Manager Review. In terms of process, each member of the Board of Directors was given a review. There are eleven factors in that review, which I'll read momentarily. There's also a measurement against fiscal twenty-twenty-one goals, which is, say, a twelfth category, as well as an overall summary. But I will, I'll talk about process. I'll talk about the factors. I'll briefly comment on the various factors and then give the overall rating and then provide members an opportunity to provide sort of their summary. I'll touch on a lot of these factors, but rather than read everything through, I'll go through the various elements here, be the overall review, and then provide members to summarize or provide comments however they wish, and then I'll close that out. So in terms of process, each one of us received a review. We send it, we compile data. Mr. Mizikar had provided a compilation of various matters under the twelve categories as examples of what had been done over the previous fiscal year, which was very helpful. We in turn would evaluate Mr. Mizikar against each of the factors, compile the score for each one of them, provide a summary score, and then submit that directly to the assistant to the town manager, the Human Resources Coordinator in the Town Manager's Office. None of us had seen the review literally until fifteen minutes before the meeting, so pardon as I'm summarizing some of these a little bit on the fly, but as I mentioned, the factors in here is what I'll go through first. And the factors are as follows. Knowledge, productivity, decision-making, oral communication, written communication, financial administration, leadership, public relations, work relationships, staff development and training, personnel practices, then, as I mentioned, fiscal twenty-twenty-one goals, and then the summary evaluation. So just what I've done here is really going to highlight some examples that were given in the various elements. By no means is it a fulsome description. I'd be here quite a bit, to be candid. There were a lot of very positive remarks about the pet town manager's performance over the past year. And colleagues, after I reviewed all of these, please feel free to add additional information that's in here, because I'll only touch a portion of it. So under knowledge, some of the comments include that a lot of it, and the recurring theme, as you can imagine, with the challenges, the unprecedented challenges from COVID. Some comments from members include this past year was reshaped by the pandemic, and our response to it as a town. At no other time has knowledge been so critical or fluid. Throughout the past year, Mr. Mizikar has demonstrated clear knowledge and understanding of all things related to policies, procedures, and finances. The town maintained its AAA bond rating from standard and poor despite financial challenges caused by the pandemic and our longstanding structural deficit. And that was cited to his leadership through his knowledge. Mr. Mizikar stared us through a rough, long-duration, ever-changing storm that threatened every aspect of our daily life and way of doing business, and now we are on the other side. Other comments under knowledge, Mr. Mizikar continues to demonstrate a broad and deep knowledge of a wide array of subject matters, including financial management, strategic planning, water quality initiatives, construction management, public relations, and communications. Other comments, the bond rating, AAA bond rating was once again cited. It was affirmed twice this fiscal year when the town was able to take advantage of historically favorable market conditions and finance the police station and public radio system project at a rate of one point four one percent, and zero point seven five percent for the refunding of the Sherwood Middle School project. Another comment under this, the final one that I'll highlight, is navigating the complexities of dealing with the COVID-nineteen pandemic while continuing to maintain high functioning governmental services and continuing to advance strategic goals, demonstrate a high-level expertise in the job. His leadership skills are evidenced by his ability to keep staff focused, motivated, and committed during a time of unprecedented challenges. Next factor is productivity. Mr. Mizikar was cited for implementing a formal performance appraisal system that incorporates the goals set by each department and will offer an opportunity to have qualitative and quantitative ways to measure and evaluate employee performance. Mr. Mizikar sets high expectations for town staff and also devotes a great tail of time in developing talent and working with people to help them grow into their roles. Bill's school building project cited as another example of productivity. The project is due for completion on time and under budget despite the challenges of COVID-nineteen. And he also did not lose sight of other longstanding initiatives like providing clean, sediment-free drinking water to the residents by committing the unidirectional flushing program. Other under productivity, the board and the town manager adopted goals in August twenty-twenty, and these goals represent the first time that goals were established across the organization. Significant progress was made in this area, and all departments submitted goals in November and a five-year vision statement and staffing plans in November as well. All employees have submitted goals, and then for the next year, an achievement of these goals, we measured regularly as part of this modernized employee performance measurement process. Also, he has taken initiative to improve upon his work product with extensive analysis and adjustments to ensure it is accurate and beneficial to successfully addressing complex matters, which has led to superior outcomes. That is under, go to the next one, but that was under productivity. Factor three, decision-making. Some of the items that were factored were his ability to keep us all safe in our first outdoor town meeting, to being able to maneuver us through the financial challenges faced by the town and the school department during the worst public health crisis of our lifetime, or of our time for that matter, and somehow Mr. Mizikar And somehow, Mr. Mizikar handled it all with confidence and calm. Also focusing or looking at the successful debt exclusion for the police station and the successful vote for the nine and a half million dollar override. Comment was, I think Mr. Mizikar's decision-making abilities were tested and proven to be quite effective. Another comment in decision-making, he's continued to deal with the economic and human impact of the coronavirus. From an economic standpoint, he continued to analyze and fine-tune his financial forecasting model, which has enabled the town to navigate through this challenging period as best as possible. And from a human standpoint, he has been fully supportive of the board's diversity, equity, and inclusion initiative and continues to work with town departments, council on aging, SYFS and other, and the school department to make sure the town will enable all residents to thrive. One final comment, Mr. Mizikar had early on identified the operational difficulties to come due to the pandemic in early 2020, weeks before the gravity of the situation manifested themselves. Next, under factor four is oral communication. Mr. Mizikar's presentations during board meetings about COVID-19 and financial matters follow predictable format and make it easy for people watching to understand. This reviewer is always impressed with the way that Mr. Mizikar presents communications during board meetings, at town meetings, and on his monthly interview show, Ask the Manager, cited as being a very skillful communicator. Similar comment on the town manager's report of coronavirus, the COVID-19 report at our bi-weekly meetings, updates through thoughtful and well-developed presentations that clearly convey the relevant subject matter. Also, there was note that one of the board members had participated in several meetings with Mr. Mizikar in the school department over a 15-month period. And in each meeting, Mr. Mizikar had been fully transparent and conveyed information clearly and concisely. And the last comment under this, oral communication. In brief, in addition to his many other examples, Mr. Mizikar has demonstrated superior communication skills in his work for the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee through clear communication of his detailed analysis and budget projections. Factor five, written communication. One reviewer cites the best example of effective written communication this year comes in the form of the agreement documents between the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, and the residents that provided the framework for the override. Without these written documents, I do not believe the override would have been successful. Mr. Mizikar took input from the board and created those documents on his own, incorporated feedback from both the Selectmen and the School Committee and produced final documents for the community. Another comment is through weekly emails to the board, Mr. Mizikar timely communicates pertinent issues and concerns of the town and the board. We have received 65 weekly emails since the beginning of 2020 alone. Being informed in between meetings has facilitated more efficient and meaningful board discussions. Another comment is I continue to be impressed by his written communications on complex issues. Factor six, financial administration. As previously cited, the town maintained the AAA bond rating and leveraged it to refinance the final 10 years of the Sherwood bonds to save the taxpayers about $2 million. And cited, Mr. Mizikar has also cited as always looking for ways to lessen the burden on the taxpayers of the community. He also encourages departments to actively seek grant opportunities and again, will deliver the new Beal school on time and under budget. Another comment is references a comment from John Wooden. It says, you will find that success and attention to details, the smallest details usually go hand in hand. The fiscal 2021 budget was anything but ordinary. Starting early April 2020, Mr. Mizikar proactively modeled the potential financial impact of the coronavirus pandemic based on the town's previous experience during the dot-com bust and Great Recession and developed a revised fiscal 2021 projection based on a well-thought-through set of assumptions. This modeling has been accurate and helped navigate the town through initial dangers of this financial crisis. Also cited is early financial analysis formed two critical matters for the fiscal 22 budget development process. First, has continued to develop and refine a detailed five-year financial projection, which may clear the potential catastrophic results of a fiscal 22 without additional funds. And second, this five-year financial projection served as the foundation for the $9.5 million override requested Shrewsbury voters. Another comment that his, I believe that Mr. Mizikar's statement on this subject is in the self-evaluation clearly describes his success in this area. Success in maintaining the town's AAA bond rating itself speaks to his very high level of competence in this area. Factor seven is leadership. There has, let's see, there have been a whole lot of aimless wandering over the past year without the leadership of Mr. Mizikar. I'm still amazed at the forward progress that occurred despite the complete disruption caused by the pandemic. New policies were put in place and followed. New employees were hired. Each department set goals and worked to achieve them. And two major initiatives moved forward with overwhelming voter approval. One reviewer cited that Mr. Mizikar was a rock star in fiscal 2021. He has continued to lead the town with a sense of calm, yet forcefulness that has enabled the town to continue to operate as efficiently as possible during the pandemic. Driven by excellence and to be an excellent public servant, he has a clear vision for a world-class municipal operation and of a community that will enable all residents to thrive. Another comment, while Mr. Mizikar has shown exceptional leadership in the past year, as evidenced by the town's successful service delivery during the COVID-19 pandemic, he does acknowledge more needs to be done in this area. I suspect that as we emerge from the difficulties, difficulties of current situation, Mr. Mizikar will continue to be successful in this area. Next, under factor eight, public relations. I'll streamline a little bit because we're starting to get a little redundant here. But one was cited in terms of while some groups are meeting in Zoom, it's not the same as having a person interaction. Mr. Mizikar was able to communicate effectively in this virtual format. And this reviewer looked forward to seeing Mr. Mizikar having more opportunities to get out in the community going forward. The, over the summer, Mr. Mizikar spent time listening. He went out and as anyone who watches before, we had a dog hearing and there were numerous complaints about barking dogs. He had spent time independently listening for barking dogs on Patriot Lane to prepare for an upcoming dog hearing and has visited the home of a resident concerned with construction and Wyman Farms near their property. Also citing for Mr. Mizikar having a strong working relationship with our congressman, Lieutenant Governor, State Representative, and State Senator and is held in high regard by his colleagues in local government. Mr. Mizikar continues to maintain an open line of communication with all Shrewsbury stakeholders, whether in person via Facebook, Code Red, and monthly Ask the Manager SMC TV shows, and most recently on Kevin TV. Mr. Mizikar has emphasized the subject, public relations, as one of his major priorities since the state of his tenure with the town. He believes strongly in transparency and continues to improve upon this. Success in this area needs the support and involvement of the Board of Selectmen, which is committed to supporting and working with the town manager to accomplish this goal. Factor nine, work relationships. Mr. Mizikar is a very likable person, so it is no surprise that he has developed a strong working relationship throughout the organization. I often hear positive feedback from working with Mr. Mizikar from people on boards and committees and town meeting members. Mr. Mizikar sets high standards and has established a collaborative and professional work environment with our town government that empowers and enables town employees to thrive. He understands that the town's operational success is keyed upon all levels of the organization being aligned and working towards shared objectives. To this end, he continues to develop strong relationships throughout the organization. Another comment is from another board member. I believe that Mr. Mizikar and I have developed a very positive and productive working relationship where ideas and information have flowed freely. Because of this, I very much enjoy working with him. His willingness to listen and consider new and different ideas contributes strongly to my opinions on this subject. Factor 10, staff development and training. Mr. Mizikar has dedicated himself to the training and development of his staff as evidence through the goal-setting process, implementation of the five-year visioning and staffing plan for each department, implementation of a formal performance appraisal document for non-union employees, and the partnership with Selkirk to provide leadership training from John Wharton. He remains fully committed to continuous employee development and fully encourages the continued professional education for his team. His direct reports also have been encouraged to continue with their professional development by participating in ongoing education programs and certifications. Mr. Mizikar identified training and staff development as a major element to both his and the staff's and therefore the organization's success. My observation is that Mr. Mizikar strongly believes the staff's personal and professional growth benefit everyone and encourages his staff to take advantage of the opportunities. Further, I believe that demonstrates his commitment and caring to his, and caring of his staff. Factor 11, personnel practices. Working with the Personnel Board, Mr. Mizikar implemented a personnel performance appraisal system for non-union employees. The system, along with the employee handbook, formalizes a process that is kind of a common practice in the successful organizations. And he also cited for Mr. Mizikar's successful collaboration with various unions around concessions that enabled us to balance the fiscal 21 budget while avoiding layoffs and disruptions in service to residents. Even in a virtual setting, he is engaged in forthcoming with information about the role in the town. He is someone that you would have, would want to work for because of his relationship that he develops with employees and his collaborative nature. Mr. Mizikar cited, and his team are being cited as establishing a rigorous collaborative and successful hiring process. As a result, Shrewsbury continues to be highly sought after, community to work at, and attracts professionals from throughout the Commonwealth. And I think the next, so that's the 11 elements, and then the fiscal 2021 goals. Not a lot of description here as much because they're sprinkled throughout the first 11 factors. But he had cited as making, made progress on a lot of the goals that were initially adopted during this past fiscal year. So Mr. Mizikar received an overall rating of exceeds expectations, exceptional, outstanding, which is between the third and fourth, between the highest two categories. And candidly, I could have gone on a lot longer. I apologize for going as long as I did. But the comments were overwhelmingly favorable under the 11 categories. Now, what I'd like to do is rather than read through the summary section, provide each member of the board to provide either the summary, their feedback, or whatever comments they'd like. Mr. DePaula.
Mr. Chairman, I think you did a great job summarizing that, given the amount of time you had. I congratulate you for that. And I congratulate Mr. Mizikar for what I think is an excellent evaluation. I do have to say, I looked at these scores, my scores, and they didn't seem to drive with what my memory was. And I went back and checked. And somehow or another, based on what I sent into the office, five categories were underscored on my line. And two were overscored, so something happened there. But, you know, maybe just for the record, we could get it checked and fixed. I don't know what happened. But I would say, I, to say that the work that Mr. Mizikar has done over the, particularly the past year, to say that it's been exceptional, I think is an understatement. One of the things that I look at particularly is that he was ahead of what needed to be done with COVID before. I think we even knew COVID was out of Washington State. I can remember him telling us he was starting to plan for how the government was going to work over the next year and start planning for that. I don't think that's common. I think he was several weeks ahead of the board on that. And I think it was clearly a benefit to the town. So and the only other thing I'll say, because you've covered a lot of it, is I found Mr. Mizikar's evaluation to be, in my opinion, extremely honest and objective. It was detailed. He could back up what he said. I really appreciated the level of detail that was put into that, Mr. Mizikar. I think it helped remind, at least myself, of all the things that we were able to accomplish, particularly you were able to accomplish with your staff during the past year. So, you know, kudos for that also. So I'm looking forward for a couple more years of working with you. And I don't know, maybe next year, we're going to have to put fives on the scale, but we'll see.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mrs. Cassavan.
You did an excellent job summarizing the bulk of what people had said. I just want to take a moment to just thank Mr. Mizikar for all of his efforts. It was a crazy evaluation period. I didn't know it at the time. And I did note that in my summary. But the evaluation period included the establishment of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force, our first-ever outdoor annual town meeting, a viable project for Centec North, a definitive plan to replace the aging police station and the emergency communication system, and an operational override that is large enough to address the structural deficit that we have been struggling with for at least a decade and probably more. And so, like I said, we probably didn't realize it at the time, but the year was remarkable. And I believe that Mr. Mizikar deserves so much credit for his role as an innovative, strategic, collaborative leader and partner to the Board of Selectmen in striving to always be better as a board, as a community, as a manager. Just really grateful for all of your efforts and all of your work because there really wasn't any opportunity to breathe. Right onto the next thing, and I'm just, I want to thank you for that.
Any other comments? Mr. Labo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I mean, similar, I mean, we all heard what the summary evaluations were. So I'm on board with the rest of the board. Honestly, Mr. Mizikar, as I know, I tend to be, I guess, a little bit of a hard grader. And I don't like to give out the top grades because I always like to leave the manager a little hungry and looking to improve. Not that all A's would stop one from doing that. But I did choose, I mean, I made a very conscious decision to make it to my standing practice. I feel as a result of, or not as a result, but due to all the extraordinary, unexpected challenges that came our way and how effectively Mr. Mizikar addressed them, I gave him the highest rankings I possibly could. I do want to particularly note that, you know, essentially, there was no guidebook for him on how to manage a municipal organization during a pandemic. He had to write a book on the fly. And I, exceptional and outstanding, that most standard municipal functions were maintained at high levels, that actually pre-pandemic goals, FY21, were addressed. And then overall, there was thoughtful, creative, and timely responses to multiple municipal and pandemic challenges. And those were effectively conceived, developed, and then implemented to the benefit of the community. I also want to compliment the manager on the tone he set. I believe displaying quiet, strength, level-headed, focused, leashed style communicated a very positive message to the organization and to the community at large during very unsettled times. And the one that I really want to highlight is financial administration. Similar to all the other challenges, a lot of scenarios had to be made, a lot of modeling had to be done, a lot of adjustments had to be made. And then bring those options to the board. And then bring those options to the board and then once the preferred option was determined. He continued to manage the twenty one budget effectively and and plan the twenty two budget. If the board will allow me one more moment, I. I do want to comment that, you know, this is the first year we've used this tool, I believe. Not mistaken, this evaluation tool. Honestly, I I was satisfied with the old one. I had nothing to do with the drafting of the old one. I think this one is a little overdue. I think it's just too much, frankly. I get the sense that some members put hours and hours into this. I don't know if that's really necessary. I I I think that the manager serves, you know, it's a unique employment relationship, he's a contracted employee of the board. And. I mean, I I miss with no, you know, bad expectations. We all see the stories in the paper when a manager suddenly isn't the manager anymore. And the newspaper article says, but his last review was excellent. So I I mean, I I just caution the board or I I don't know if any others agree with me. And I know a lot of effort went into creating this tool. But frankly, I I I think it's it's too much. And similar to what Mr. DePaulo said, I don't know if he was referring to the chart. I think it's page eighteen, just trying to grab it right now where the scores were presented. And if I think that my scoring on page eighteen. The seconds were factor seven on. If I'm the fourth. Row. I am in the above where my name is mentioned. Those are my numbers, so that needs to be corrected, please. But Mr. Mizikar, I mean. Great work. Tremendous pressure and. Keep up the good work.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Thank you. So I just want to say that I don't think those are my numbers either. But I don't want to play with my computer right now to look at my copy of the evaluation, so. I just wanted to note that and I also, I want to echo what you said, Mr. LeBeau. So I think this is the second year that we've used this tool and this year I purposely started earlier. And I still didn't get it done until four twenty nine on the day that it was due. And I'm not even exaggerating. It takes me at least six hours, so. Maybe we do want to look this over because I know that maybe Mr. Mizikar is taking you quite a bit of time also. But it it's it's intensive, so and I'm pretty good at management, so there we go.
Mr. DePaulo, go ahead and then one one final.
I I didn't know in addition to evaluating the manager tonight, we were going to evaluate the valuation thing. I know it took a while to do it. But I will say that. I think that. By doing that, and I know it took everybody a lot of time, I think that the level of detail in each category. Starting with with the manager was exceptional. And I don't think we've ever gone that deep. I I don't recall a manager ever going that deep. And really outlining what he had done and also in some cases, what he what he had hoped to do more of. So. I mean, we can discuss this later, but to be honest. It did take a lot of time, but I do think. As reading over everybody's comments, I mean, there's a clear indication. Of 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 what we saw as expectations being met or perhaps not, mostly being met, almost always being met. Or being exceeded. And I think as a document for the public, because this is a public record. I think it's a valuable tool, so I'd be reluctant to go back to the old form and just for the record. I worked on the old one and I worked on the new one. And I wanted to fix that old one from after the first year we did it, so. Because I thought it was too brief. You you could write your your thing on the back of a bubble gum wrapper, but. Maybe there's a balance in between, but I just think there's a wealth of information in here from all the board members. That I I think is good. For historical document and and for the public's edification on what has been done and how it met our expectations, so. Anyways, I don't want to take away from. Mr. Mizikar's great review, so I'm going to end with Kevin. He did a great job. I don't care if we do it on the back of a. You know, a piece of paper or we do it on this. A fantastic job, no matter what.
I just have a couple of final comments because I think everything that could be said has been said, but just words that. Over the past year, just forward thinking with the financial modeling, transparent, calm, collected. You know, presence. Mr. Mizikar has a presence, whether it's during a town meeting or it's a conversation or it's in a smaller group setting. He has a presence about him and a conveyance of information that's clear, concise and accurate, which is important, right? At the end of the day, it's credibility. And he has that and then some. You know, the last thing I want to say is about forward thinking, you know, you have a great year like this and it'd be easy to stop. And we're already talking about strategic planning, so we're moving forward and. Rubber's hitting the road on the five year sort of financial projections we've done. Now we're talking about where we're going as a community. So the forward thinking and the transformation of our community to reflect the values of our. Community and allow all citizens to thrive, that's something that we'll see going forward and and that's again. Mr. Mizikar, always thinking about ways to be a great public servant and always thinking about ways to do things better, so. I think simply put, you had an outstanding year. You raised the bar somehow even higher than you did during the previous year and we appreciate. All of your hard work over the past year and looking forward to this coming year and beyond.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mizikar.
Oh, I see this.
I have Mrs. Flynn, I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Um, Kevin, I, being a new selectman, did not participate in the assessment process and I feel like I should make a joke that maybe we need to bring you down a little bit, but. In all honesty. Just an extraordinary year and I just feel like seeing what you do day in and day out. There are not many times I think people pause to tell you what a great job that you did. And as a resident, I'm very grateful, especially over the past year during the pandemic for everything you've done. I've seen a deep respect for our community, our residents and our employees. So even though this is, I'm dragging this out even more, I really think you deserve. You know, the small bit of time for us to to recognize all of your accomplishments and to say thank you.
Thank you. Any final comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, so. So I'm super grateful for the board selectmen and and the time, not only the time that you've placed into your view, but you know. I know you don't want to hear it, but you know, this is a team effort. We work very well together. That's something that I sought coming to this community and will never take for granted and I certainly appreciate that. I also stand on the shoulders of the town managers that have gone before me, so that presence that you referenced, Mr. Samia, is. Reflective of many others and and the work that's in in my performance review is is reflected of of all town staff. We work very hard day and day out, proud of proud of that team. And grateful to continue to have this opportunity and humbled by the comments, not. I don't take them for granted and we'll see what we can do this year, so thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next item on the agenda is under new business to review the Beal reuse process to date. For the property located at one through seven Maple Avenue and act on the process moving forward, Mr. Mizikar.
Alright, so we'll go back in and share a couple more slides with the board this evening. My goal this evening is to kind of recap and. Remind everyone of of the process that we've gone through. And the disposition of this key piece of property within the community. There's been a lot of work put into it and oftentimes when you start something in two thousand eighteen and you go through a pandemic. And and you come out in twenty twenty one and. There's a lot that's forgotten, so just take a couple minutes to remind you what we did and then hopefully set a path forward to to. How we move forward with with this this critical project, so. Talk about the pre-planning, how we went through the RFP process. The document that we did receive and then make some suggestions and talk with the board collaboratively. So the board created the Beal Reuse Committee in November of twenty seventeen. You know, after we received a green light to. With funding from the MSBA for the construction of the new school. And provided a very clear charge to them to find the best use for the property that will ultimately will no longer need, which we're moving into that time this coming fall. During that process. The. Town with a Beal reuse, there's public hearings throughout that. And we wanted to hear from the public, but they thought the best use of the site would be, so. During that plea printed, excuse me, pre-planning process through a grant with mass development, the town undertook a study on the revitalization of the entire town center. This study also had a requirement to focus on particular attention on a critical property that we got to choose. And that was obviously the Beal School. This led to a complete analysis of the existing conditions, preliminary conceptual layouts for any future development. And this information was shared in public forums and through a person, through public forums of the overall town center project. That the planning department was leading us through on how we can revitalize that space to the betterment of all residents. And then we also use those schematic concepts in a post forum survey. So residents really had an opportunity to consider what we want to do within the town center, provide good feedback, but then also key in on this. On this property. We we had a great consulting team funded through mass development with the Horsey Witten Group, who's worked with the town on other studies, including our master plan. And that ultimately led us to the development of RFP. Request for proposal process to establish a framework for the development. They clearly communicated those priorities that were set forth by board selectmen and and the community's input, professional planning staff that we're also fortunate to have. Continuation of the 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 pre-planning work with regards to the town center rezoning. That process, you know, took place from May twenty nineteen through August twenty twenty. A particular well attended, professionally run. Public forums that I think everyone was very satisfied with in November and December of twenty nineteen. That led us to town center rezoning adoption that occurred when we ultimately held a town meeting on August eighth, twenty twenty. With what we think is a really good plan to to move the town forward. And the approach that we took through through the entire process was that. We wanted to ensure the revitalization of the town center were complementary to prospective redevelopment of the Beal site. With a clear understanding that the Beal site could be a catalyst for the redevelopment of the town center, so complementary was the key word. When we think about how to redevelop Beal in the context of the town center revitalization and also it being a catalyst. Very. A number of towns obviously take on town center redevelopment, but very few own a piece of property that they have the ability to shape the outcome so much with and get the ball rolling. That Beal request for proposal process was developed again through a second grant from mass development. To to prepare that very technical document, incorporate the town's desires and then desired outcomes. And the BOS at that time acknowledged the hard work of the Beal reuse committee and and then. Provide an additional charge to keep that committee in place through the oversight of the RFP proper process. And to review those proposals that came in. That occurred in February of twenty twenty. The RFP was developed with the insistence of the assistance of the consultants, excuse me. And then we ultimately issued that RFP in September twenty twenty with a few a few key points that I think is important to remember. We charged the developer and anyone that wanted to submit a proposal to make a significant positive impact on. The aesthetic appeal, image and day to day vibrancy of the town center. To serve as a showpiece for the town center that generates excitement in the community by including uses that will increase foot traffic. Draw visitors from other parts of Shrewsbury and beyond. And demonstrate an awareness of the district as a whole, surrounding economic and cultural resources. That are a part of the extended neighborhood. Not least of which is the historic nature of the the wonderful town center that we all enjoy with the Commons, so. That ultimately led to one proposal that was received. It's been evaluated by the reuse committee over the course of, you know, roughly two and a half, three month period. Obviously came to the board selectmen through a memo. With a recommendation in March of twenty twenty one. Initial meeting with the Beal reuse committee at that time and a and a more thorough presentation at the board's meeting on May eleventh, so. I mean, really, in summary, it's a lot of work that that we've gone through and planning. For how we think it would be that the town would be best served by the redevelopment of this site. There's really great public feedback through the whole town center revitalization conversation and specific public input on this site. And this developer has come back with a proposal that does meet all those challenges that we set forth in the RFP process. Some of those are things that we need to talk about a little bit more, like what does it mean to generate foot traffic? How do you do that? What approach are we going to take? Obviously, some site plan considerations that that we still need to think about and work with with the developer. I think before I turn it back over to the chairman. My recommendation, I kind of looking through that timeline that we went through, we had a lot of public input at the beginning. Throughout the course up to the issuance of the RFP. But now since we've received a proposal. You know, I I think that it's an important key step early on in the next phase of this process is to get some public input. And look forward to continuing to to work with the developer as they remain interested in this project and refining the plan to get. And receiving that public input, but also look forward to discussion with the board and. Getting your input on how you'd like us to proceed from the staff.
Any questions or comments from board members? Mrs. Cassavan.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to give my fellow board members an opportunity to jump in. I'm really glad that we took the time to kind of walk it back. I think it was really necessary. To just remind the public of the steps that were taken that got us to this point because for me, it's like. I know it was, I was involved in it, but there's this huge black hole of the past fifteen months where my mind was on other things. But yet this this process of the RFP and developing this proposal was happening in the background all along. I do want to just note that the Beal reuse committee is comprised of not only town staff, but also residents and business owners. From the town center itself, and that's a really important thing for people to understand is that we are asking. Those people that live and work in the town center to help. Develop the RFP to help go out and look for the right project for this area and I'd like to just note that. You know, Sleckman DePaulo has been chairing that committee and has a wealth of information to offer on how we've gotten to this point. I know that I'm hearing from people that. In a negative way, that there's only been one proposal. And to me, I'm not bothered so much by one proposal if it's the right proposal. That's what I'm looking for. It only takes one to be right. And this may not be perfect, but I think that we have an obligation to see it through and see if we can work with. With this proposal and bring forth through the public comment. Opportunity, something that that the community could be comfortable with. I'm not willing to say no to this right now and. You know, I I believe that. um, you know, I, I believe that the piece of the RFP that's really important is we want to increase foot traffic and draw visitors. And without a residential component, which I know makes people's um, it's like nails on a chalkboard sometimes when you talk about apartments. We're talking about fifty units. We aren't talking about two hundred and fifty units. Um, I think there's a concern that that's going to suddenly overwhelm our schools. Um, and I know from having conversations with Mr. Mizikar that if we look at the Lakeway Commons, uh, the, the apartments that are there, the Quinn thirty-five, or I'm not sure what it's called now. Um, that's two hundred and fifty units that produced twenty schoolchildren in twenty twenty. And in twenty nineteen, I think it was seventeen schoolchildren. Front doors are what produce schoolchildren, not necessarily apartments. Um, and so I think to completely just shut down and write this off because it might produce one or two children for the school system is, is just not in the best interest of redevelopment and revitalization of the town center. This could be whatever goes there, whether it's this project or whether we decide it's not this project and we're going to look for something else. Whatever goes there is going to set the tone for what the town center is in the next decade, two decades, fifty years. Um, it's just going to take that one development and then others will start looking at the properties that are available to be redeveloped in the town center. And we'll start to see the kinds of changes that we were looking for when we first started out on this journey. Um, if I could just for a couple of more minutes, just talk about a few more things that I've kind of been thinking about. I think we have choices here, right? We can decide that we don't want to put anything there, right? We want to just maybe keep the building, knock the building down, whatever we're going to do with the building, build a park. Um, that's not going to bring us any revenue. And during discussions that are around the override, you know, people are saying there's such a dependence on the residential property tax. Well, if we want to have less of a dependence on residential property tax, we need to do more to attract commercial development. And from my discussion with Mr. DiPaolo, we could get residential development all day long. But if we want to have the commercial development, that comes with a housing component of some sort. And we have to decide whether or not we're comfortable with that. Um, and I don't know if I am or I'm not yet. Uh, but I am willing to go through the process, including the public hearing, to really understand uh, what that would mean for the town center and whether I'm willing um, to forego an opportunity to generate some commercial tax revenue um, because I'm not wanting to put apartments there. Uh, so those are just some thoughts that I had regarding this process, but there's been an incredible amount of work that's been done and public um, input and public process that's been followed. Uh, and yes, there's definitely a need to do more, uh, but I am not ready yet to walk away from this.
Thank you. Mr. DiPaolo. Hold on one second.
That was, I, I, that was excellent, uh, Ms. Cassavan. I think you really summed it all up greatly. Um, I, the easiest thing would be to say, me too. Um, but um, I, I, I do think um, you're right that we should go through with this. We don't see any take this to the next step. This ho- hopefully it'll keep moving in the positive direction. Um, and uh, we'll come out with a, with a positive outcome and and a project that everybody will be satisfied with. Um, but we won't know that unless we continue. I, I, I just like to say, and I'm sure we're going to have a public hearing and it's probably going to be said over and over again. We're, we're going to hear people who, who don't want apartments. Um, and over and over again, some, somebody um, staff, the board, the manager are going to explain why the residential component is so important to this project. If you want a vibrant downtown, you have to have, even if it's a small downtown, you have to have foot traffic. You have to have people there. If you only have stores or a restaurant, whatever they are, businesses. Um, then you don't have people who live around there who are going to use those services. Um, you're going to have a drive-to-work, drive-home, and the place is going to be empty. Um, and that's just the nature of of these kind of projects, revitalizations, foot traffic is key. It's key. And that means apartments or housing in the, in the general area, whether they're single-family homes or whatever, you need to generate traffic. Um, but we need to find a balance. So I, I think we can do that. Um, and really, I'm just catching, you, you really covered just about all of it. Um, my thoughts are um, that we need to continue to engage um, as we're trying to do at the moment with um, the proponent. Um, work um, uh, with them and try to come up with a concept that is as close to what we believe meets the goals um, of the town center district and um, our goal is for Beal and how that all ties in. And when we're comfortable with that, and hopefully we can have that in a few weeks. Um, and it'll be conceptual, but it'll give people a better understanding of what we're trying to do. And I think there needs to be an explanation in the presentation by the proponent of why it's necessary to build whatever they propose. Um, we know what we need to include in it. We know we need open space um, in the back of the site, which is what we said from the beginning, not just open space, but publicly accessible and usable open space. Um, so we know what we need to do. Um, I think right now we've taken the first step. It's time to move forward. Um, and I think we do that. We talked to developers, the board. Um, and um, with the support of staff, talked to developers in a, in a public meeting um, about this new um, iteration of the plan. And if we're satisfied that we're on the, on the way, that it's heading in the right direction, then I think it's time for a public hearing. So people have something to react to and we can explain why or why we're not doing something. Uh, a certain type of development. So that would, that would be my suggestion. And um, it'll take a couple more weeks, but I think people um, as they come to understand the project, um, will, I, I believe they'll become more supportive of it when they understand what the dynamics of the project and how it affects the town center um, come together. So that's my thought. Thank you.
Anyone, yeah, Mrs. Flynn.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I agree Beth said everything perfectly, so I won't belabor that. I would just add that there is a cost of doing nothing as well, hearing um, some of the community that would like to have a park or open space. You know, there's a significant cost to take down the current building, which I'm pretty sure we would uh, agree needs to happen. There's a much higher cost than I ever would have imagined to build a park or open space uh, there. So we just promised the community that we would not come back at them for a number of years for additional funding. So I don't think there's a lot of tolerance there. So I agree a hundred percent that a public hearing is appropriate to bring everybody up to speed, certainly to get their input and involve them in the decision-making and
Thank you. Mr. LeBeau.
Um, I just want to inform the board that I agree with the statements that were made and I think Selectman Cassavan uh, did a terrific job of uh, outlining the situation. We've saw it, uh, she spoke very clearly about what the situation was at uh, Lakeway. Um, for years, we heard people say, what do you, what's going to happen down at the Edge Mia Drive-In? Only way we, the only way we could find to get a meaningful commercial development was to have complimentary residential. Um, that's just the way things seem to be, folks. Even the, you know, the, and granted, you know, Worcester's a city and Shrewsbury's a town, but even the highly lauded Polar Park developments. There are two hundred and fifty apartments that are part of the financial model to make that whole thing work. So that's the reality of development where we live. We went through a process with the community to try to determine how to use that space on Maple Ave. And uh, it was determined to try to develop it, add to the commercial dac- tax base and, and try to uh, improve the vibrancy of the town center. So I am supportive of moving ahead, as been stated, to have a public hearing and to gauge more public input.
Thank you. Um, everything's been covered. Just a couple of comments, just to go back to the idea that, that and Beth, you said this, but it, it, it only takes one, right? So during the RFP process, um, the proponent here met the technical specs and the financial specs, so we need to keep that in mind. Um, this project, it's imperative that we get it right. So to go through the process is important because if we don't, we'll never know how to get it right. So we need to go through it. There's been a lot of public input since day one. Probably need to develop the plan a little more, a little more concrete, and then provide opportunities. So stakeholders in the community will have the facts available to them and be able to ask questions and get substantive answers. And that's imperative here because uncertainty would be not a good thing, right? Because the vibrancy of the center is what we're all seeking. This will set the tone for generations to come. And the most important thing is the next public venue for opportunities to comment is to make sure there's a plan to react to in adequate detail and strong answers back. Because I think that this will set the vitality as opposed to another option would be single-use. And to me, if we went down that venue or that path, would essentially take the whole tank, the whole visioning uh, for the, the center of, of the town. And look, a couple of years ago with the winter stroll in December, we saw a thousand to two thousand members of the community and, and surrounding communities come and participate in that. And it's, and it's ironic, we hear a lot about people going to the Cape and going downtown for Wednesdays and they have an opportunity to go and, and walk around. This is what we're trying to uh, present in our own front yard. And you build this and we build it right and others will follow. And it will create a vibrancy in our hometown rather than having to go to a adjacent community. So getting back to the most important thing is we're striving to get this right. It is important for all members of the community to have an opportunity to opine on it. We're looking forward to that. We'll make sure that the information is, is strong. Um, answers will be readily apparent and, and look forward to taking it to the next step. But absolutely want to see this process through. At a minimum, we need to learn from it. So far, the answers have been strong and forthcoming and look forward to uh, being able to present it at the next natural step of this process. So appreciate everybody's feedback, looking forward to working with the proponent. Developing some of the answers maybe that, that we had, uh, providing uh, answers to that area and then providing opportunities for public feedback. So we're on the right track and and uh, be able to give answers to people with their concerns and also be able to talk forward to the benefits, what this could be for generations to come, not only there, but all of downtown. Anything else?
Mr. Samia, oh, we prepared for the public hearing at the, the meeting on the, the twenty-second. Um, is that the desire of the board? If, if we can get the developer here or is this something that you would uh, ask to hold uh, until the first meeting in July or, or something else?
Mr. DiPaolo, I, I, I'll go ahead.
Thank you, um, Mrs. Samia. Um, I really think um, we need one more meeting with the proponent to see what um, they've come up with and, and to answer some of the questions that we've sent um, to them, some of the comments and questions, um, because if, if it doesn't pass muster with us, I, I find it hard to believe it would pass muster with the community. And I, I think it's important that we get it um, with, with the support of the staff to, and the developer or the proponent to get this thing as close to what the visioning is um, as possible. And then when we get there, so I, I guess the appointment, Mr. Mizikar, I would say, even though July is a vacation month, um, I think um, I, I don't think it's realistic to expect that um, the proponent is going to have a proposal next week or we could call a meeting next week. I seriously doubt that'll happen. I think um, we meet with them. I, I think the, the twenty-fourth, um, or the twenty-second, whatever it is, is enough. Uh, enough time to get there and then, and then move and have something that um, you know, you, sometimes you can explain stuff. Um, or you, you read instructions and you really don't, it doesn't gel in your mind until you actually see somebody do it. And I think this is the case. Um, I, I think people get the idea, but um, they need to see what it really means. So I would say meet with us first. Um, hopefully it's close, at least close. I mean, it's going to need to be tweaked, I'm, I'm sure. And then open it up for the public hearing. So people have something concrete to react to that really is based on the town center zoning and the vision for the school. So that's what I would do.
I agree with that. I think we need another meeting. I think we're in addition to the questions that we presented to figure out where this is going. Um, maybe a little more granularity in terms of the plan, looking at the buffer, looking at all of that to be able to make sure that the must-haves are easily seen. And just to ask any further questions and then take it from there, assuming that that conversation is productive. Any other thoughts on that is that the general will of the committee, um, have another conversation directly with the developer and then the thought would be a meeting after that. The only concern I have is that many people will be on vacation in July. But let's continue with the process and see how it plays out with the next meeting. Mrs. Cassavan.
Even if people are on vacation, they can still submit written. They can email to us and that would then count toward the public hearing.
Good point. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DiPaolo.
To that point, two things. If the next date would be like July first, um, I know July is a big vacation month, but it's usually the week of July fourth and then the last two weeks of July are the strongest, at least historically, that's what it used to be. Um, we could have it the week after. Um, and even though we're going to be back, um, I think we're going to be back um, with in-person meetings. Um, maybe there's an opportunity um, to allow people um, to remotely participate. Um, you know, one of the things we learned from COVID is that sometimes a little awkward, but it, but it can be done. And so we might consider that also to, to try to broaden it out.
Yeah, we can work through the mechanics. Anything else? So we have a path. Hopefully bring the developer out our next meeting and have questions and answers and hopefully go from there. Okay. Anything else to move forward with that, Mr. Mizikar? Is that enough?
No, it's clear. Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. Great. So we'll, nothing else. Move along to the next item, number nine. Reviewing act to dissolve the Shrewsbury Public Lands Committee. Public Lands Committee was established by the Board of Selectmen in August fourteenth, twenty eighteen, had various members from boards in town. Mr. DiPaolo was the chair. There was a member from the Conservation Commission, Parks and Cemetery, Shrewsbury Trails, uh, Friends of Prospect Park and the Finance Committee, and there were two residents at large. My understanding, um, it was based on during the Beal project, they were looking at deeds to potential locations for the new Beal. As they were looking at the deed, they realized there were certain restrictions on one parcel of property linked to, it was actually conservation land, which I believe was originally unknown to folks. So part of the charge here was to look at the four hundred and fifty town-owned parcels and see if there are any restrictions on the deeds of those properties. Uh, my understanding is that four hundred and thirty-four of those uh, parcels have since been deciphered and there's a confidence in terms of reviewing those and what those deeds confidence in terms of reviewing those and what those deeds say. 16 remain unresolved to some extent. But my understanding is with talking with Mr. DePaulo is that the Public Lands Committee has really fulfilled its charter, taken it as far as it can go. And even the remaining parcels, six that have deeds but remain unresolved, there are five large parcels around Jordan Pond and a couple around Holden and Shirley Streets related to I-290. Those are something that would require probably may title examiner or someone with real expertise to fine tune those deeds. So that is why the, I believe, having been exhausted as far as they can go, the task has been fulfilled. And that is why we have this in front of us to be dissolved because the charge has been fulfilled. Mr. DePaulo, do I have everything right?
I, I think you do, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I will say that it, it, it was, it was a lot of work and it's hard to read those deeds and I really commend everybody for the for the work that they did because it, it, it really is, some of them are as clear as day and other ones are as clear as mud. But we, we, I think we did an excellent job. And we did what we could. And, and so just because I need to see everything through and won't accept defeat on something like that. I've been going back to it on different times in COVID. I spent quite a bit of time on it last spring. It was able to resolve a couple. There were some of them that really need the assistance of somebody who really knows how to navigate the system and, and then to that end. The register of deeds, Kate Toomey has offered to help in the process to try to, I, these parcels need to be identified with the deed. It isn't that we have a deed and we don't understand what it is. Nobody can find the deed. To the 1920s, possibly only 1900s. And anyways, I think it's important that we, if we can, we finish, we finish it up, but that it's not, it doesn't take a whole committee. Ian McCollin in Engineering has been very helpful. And if the registrar is able to help us out, I, I, I think we can get it done. So I, I think everyone on the committee would agree that we've taken it as far as we can as a committee and the, and the work is essentially done.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Lebo.
Would you entertain a motion?
I, I would, please.
Mr. Chairman, like all members, like my colleagues, I want to thank the members. I want to, I want to thank the members of the Public Lands Committee and compliment them on their good work and move to dissolve the Shrewsbury Public Lands Committee.
Second.
Having been moved in second, a roll call vote is required. Mr. Lebo.
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo.
Aye.
Mrs. Casamian.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia, I motion passes unanimously unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review an act to amend traffic rules and orders to amend Article 7, Section 13. Mr. Muzikar, did you want to provide any background on this or I can or?
I'm happy to do so. So this is the, the final step, so to speak, in the work and receipt of public comments that the board has had with regards to making safety improvements along Route 20, especially at South Street. So this, this establishes the official regulation on the town books that would allow for police department enforcement.
Thank you. Any questions? If there aren't, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move the board, I move, excuse me, I move the board amend the traffic rules and orders, Article 7, Section 13, turning movements by inserting amendment as follows, South Street at Route 20, North Brown Traffic in the right lane must turn right into Route 20. And I further move that the board sign the amendment.
Second.
Having been moved in second and a roll call vote is required. Mr. Lebo.
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo.
Aye.
Mrs. Casamian.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia, I motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is to review the act to rescind the state of emergency enacted on March 24th, 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Board members, as you recall, back in March 24th, 2020, the Board of Selectmen declared that as of that date, a local state of emergency exists in the town of Shrewsbury and that the declaration itself stated that it shall remain in effect until further notice is given pursuant to the judgment of the Board of Selectmen and the conditions leading to this declaration are no longer exist. And as you know, the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has provided that the Commonwealth State of Emergency ends on June 15th, 2021. So hence the our agenda item here, review an acting to rescind the state of emergency in Shrewsbury. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Lebo.
Well, I was going right to the motion, so I
Go ahead, Mr. Lebo, please do. I see no questions or comments, please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, like my colleagues, I am extremely pleased to move that the board rescind the state of emergency enacted on March 24th, 2020. Effective, excuse me, effective 11:59 PM on June 15th, 2021.
I second with pleasure.
Having been moved in second in with pleasure, a roll call vote is required. Mr. Lebo.
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo.
Aye.
Mrs. Casamian.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia, I motion carries unanimously and that's, that's tremendous to be able to do that. New, next item is number 12. To review an act to adopt the revised Board of Selectmen Policy 29. Board members, we saw a couple of changes in our drive. I will do my best to summarize, but ask Mr. Muzikar to augment my what I saw as changes. I saw two substantive changes. The first related to the policy and the reasons, the three bulleted reasons why address member, address numbers can be changed. They're listed there. Whether the existing address number is out of sequence with the adjacent addresses and true change on a corner lawn with building permits for remodel or new development and the business residences documented difficulty receiving emergency services or mail delivery. So the specified reasons why an address change is acceptable. And then there were subsequent linguistic changes in one, two and three, some changing the dates from seven to 10 business days and some smaller language changes. Those are what I saw as the substantive changes. Any questions or comments? Did I get them all? I think I got them all. Okay. Any questions or comments? The only question I have is under four. So it says the Board of Selectmen will review the request at the next available meeting considering all department comments. Is and I guess the only thing is, do we, should we add language in there saying whether the request complies with the requirements of this policy? Because we're going to consider the land, the, consider the department comments, but then we're going to review when we approve it, whether or not it meets the three bullets above, right? And maybe that's implicit. I don't need to overkill it, but.
I'm not, I'm not sure I understand. I do think that the board would review it. The staff comments would identify if we don't feel it's within the, those boundaries. The board would still take action. Okay, if that's what you're saying.
Yeah, no, I guess the way I was looking at it is we'll review the request at the next available meeting considering all department comments, but it's that it's not exclusively, that's not the only exclusive determinant. That's what I was saying that clearly, but it's fine. I don't think it's exclusive of our ability to consider comments as well as look at the policy it's implied. So I'm fine with it. Anything? Mr. DePaulo.
Chairman. As you were saying that, I, I noticed number four says that we would review it. And then number five said we'll notify the property owner. I don't see anything in there that the board would take action. So I have to review it and, and it doesn't say there's any determination. So maybe it's review and act on the request.
Sure.
And, and shall we drop considering all department comments? That's inherent as considering their policy.
Agreed.
Okay.
I think that's fine. Anything else? Not all entertain a motion to approve the policy as amended and further amended during this meeting. Or something to that effect.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Having moved in second and a roll call vote is required, Mr. Lebo.
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo.
Aye.
Mrs. Casavant.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia, I motion passes unanimously. Thanks. Mr. Muzikar and to Mrs. Lawson, your staff for those changes to make it more specific and clearer. Item 13 is to review an act on a one-day all alcohol license request of Joe Youssef at St. Mary's Syrian Orthodox Church. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
Having moved in second and a roll call vote is required. Mr. Lebo.
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo.
Aye.
Mrs. Casamian.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia, I motion passes unanimously. Now we'll go on to correspondence. Letter dated May 17th, 2021 from Richard Ricker, Chairman of Shrewsbury Housing Authority regarding the payment in lieu of payment, payment in lieu of taxes payment of $45,813.32 to the town. This payment in lieu of taxes, the Shrewsbury Housing Authority is an independent entity from the town and does not receive funding from the town. However, being a good neighbor within the community has made that payment to the town. So noted, next item, letter dated May 17th, 2021 from Nancy Burnett, 30 Hillcrest Avenue, requesting a reappointment to the Historic District Commission, which will take up at a subsequent meeting when other appointments are due for June 30th. So noted. Next item, 16, email dated May 18th, 2021 from Carol Holovna, 19 Wesleyan Street, Reason Ray Beal School Proposal was requesting information regarding the timeline and review of the alternative design proposal for Civicco, which is currently being developed. That's so noted. Next item is an email dated May 25th, 2021 from State Representative Anna Kane regarding the Governor, Governor Baker's filing of legislation to extend certain COVID-19 emergency measures relating to open meeting law requirements, special permits for outdoor dining and billing protection for COVID-19 patients. So noted. Next, next is item 18, email dated May 25th, 2021 from Jen Jeannie Hebert, Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce, 670 Linwood Avenue, Suite 5, Whitensville, Reason New Business Ribbon Cutting, 307 Grafton Street, which will be happening this Friday afternoon. It's a new business, a therapy, a therapy business near Cafe Noir. So noted. Email, next item email dated May 27th, 2021 from Frederick Russell, 104 Old Mill Road regarding an injury from failure of something that was cited in C Click Fix. I understand that it was a safety issue at Old Mill Road, which has since been remedied. So noted in the last email dated June 3rd, 2021 from Thomas Pacula, 110 Memorial Drive, Reason Businesses in Trying Times. Mr. Pacula and two of his civics classmates had sought feedback from the board regarding the possibility of additional farmers markets. Were more frequent meeting for farmers markets. We have responded to him pointing him to the Shrewsbury Farmers Markets that will be, the Shrewsbury Farmers Market, which has been located on, you know, the senior center since 2017. And we pointed out that it's every Wednesday from mid-June until late September and welcome to him to ask any specific questions beyond that. So that is it for the formal part of the agenda. And if there's no other comments or questions from the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Having moved in second and a roll call vote is required. Mr. Lebo.
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo.
Aye.
Mrs. Casavant.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia, I motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody, and good night and Taylor, welcome aboard and thank you for participating.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, welcome, Taylor.